I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act of Conducting Business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. We shall approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and ask limited remarks for five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome.
Present.
Beck, here.
Camper.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Henry.
Present.
First item this evening is the approval of draft minutes of January 7, 2020. The motion and second is being further discussion. Saying none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes.
Running in favor, welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Smith, Henry.
The next items, one through five, are the consent agenda items for this evening.
Next we do approve.
Right. Give a motion and a second, seeing discussion. Saying none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Before we go on to the confirmation of mayor appointments, I am willing to adjust the agenda. For those who are interested, and item number three, under the administrative items, is resolution awarding bid for Carol K Boulevard, Cedar Hill Crest Federal H City Project. I would be recommending to council that we table that this meeting, but I wanted to give an explanation as to why. So yesterday, we received notice from the association's attorney that the association was filing a request for a federal audit of the project. Apparently, it was filed more than two weeks ago, but no one told us until yesterday. Yesterday also happened to be a holiday, which means we weren't able to contact any federal or state officials to get clarification as to what the next steps were. I know Kelly tried today to get in touch with people to try to get an idea of what the next step was. Tonight's item was simply to be to award the bid. But Kelly's recommendation was to table it at least until the next meeting, which would be in two weeks, so that he has an opportunity to discuss this with the state and federal representatives, so we have more information as to what the next steps are. Because right now, if we had known about this a couple of weeks ago, possibly we could have gotten the information to be able to inform you better tonight as to what the next step would be, but we did not. And so, at this point, that's sort of where things stand on this item. I will just note that one of my concerns is a procedural one, which is every time there's a delay in this, it potentially increases the cost of the overall project. And the reason is because construction costs typically don't go down. They typically go up. We ran into this last year with not being able to, when the state was trying to negotiate for the third of an acre. That took a year, and because of that, it's added some cost to this project. We have a bid right now in hand that is in your packet for your review. You know, postponing this two weeks doesn't necessarily change that. If this were delayed to the point where that bid expires, we would be required to go out for new bids, which again, you run the risk of the cost going up even more. And so that's part of the concern from a procedural standpoint. But at this point, based on city attorney's recommendation, and I know there's probably people here who are interested in this item, I thought it made sense to move it to the front and then ask if there would be a motion to table it this time.
I'll move to table.
Give a motion and a second. Please sway the votes. You all welcome to stay if you like, but if that was the item you were waiting for, you're also free to leave. Don't feel like you're in prison here. Welcome. We have to stay. The next item, moving back up to the confirmation of mayor's appointments. We have item number one is to appoint Cheryl Zumpf to the Seward Aging Services Commission for a two-year term.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second, seeing further discussion. Saying none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. No, let's do this one.
Running in favor, welcome, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Smith, Henry.
Item number two, reappoint Lisa Carl, Martha Bender, and Sandra Wright to the Seward Aging Services Commission for a two-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, seeing further discussion. Saying none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Item three, appoint Dr. Dan Ellis to the zoning board of adjustment for a three-year term.
Second.
Motion and a second, seeing further discussion. Saying none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Next, we have public hearings, 17:00 PM preliminary and final plat of replat of blocks two and three, Seward Rail Campus PUD Original Edition. Welcome.
Thank you. Tim Warwick, building zoning codes enforcement. Monday, the 13th, planning commission met for a review of preliminary and final plat of the Seward Rail Campus Blocks Two and Three. The reason for this replat is to create a Boulevard entrance into the rail campus, as well as create different block sizes to effectively utilize the infrastructure out there, as well as landscaping this proposed. There's been a request for specific lot size by party interested being locked for Block Three, and they also requested an auto body designation be added to the uses for the rail campus. Planning commission was unanimous in approving this replat. So if there are any questions?
Any questions from the council? This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from a public wish to comment on item number one under public hearings? Saying no one, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And then, we have for one, item one A, this is an ordinance vacating a portion of city right-of-way, the Walker Road between, I believe it's supposed to be the east right-of-way line of Pine Street and the east line of Seward Rail Campus PUD Original Edition Final Plat. Did you want to talk specifically on that?
Yep. As we planted the original Seward Rail Campus PUD, we noted that when city engineer Jake Vash had laid this out at the time, Walker Road, as it curves off of the county road and comes down, and then, it's still Walker Road, but as it starts making that curve adjacent to the railroad approaching the bridge, and then heads north-south before it S-curves back up to Highway 15 as it currently structures, it actually runs along the Burlington and on the Burlington Northern Right-of-Way. And we've noted this for years, as it was a county road before the city ever acquired any interest in it. And so, just to protect the city, we had originally platted a 30-foot easement or right-of-way along the northern border of the original 30-acre rail campus addition. With the new alignment of the blocks and the lots the way we want on Block Two, it was city engineer Vash's recommendation to eliminate that need for right-of-way on the top portion of the plat, and that that will still continue on and be available as it wraps around to Aspen Street. But he doesn't see a purpose for it in the way that he's aligned the access points for all the lots now. That originally stretched all the way over to the northern part of what is platted as Lot Two on here, because that was its access out, because that was a divided block. Now, that's a singular lot, and so it doesn't need that access anymore. So that's the reason for the vacation. That's the difference between this plat and the previous one in regards to right-of-way. I would note that we did have a representative from Schuler also attend the planning and zoning commission and specifically talk about that issue and the flow of traffic down to the Boulevard. I think we addressed all those issues. Correct, Tim, at planning and zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions specifically on the ordinance in item A?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to vacate a portion of city right-of-way of Walker Road between the east row line of Pine Street and the east line of Seward Rail Campus PUD Original Edition Final Plat. As herein, actors set forth to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time and this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2020-2, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So move.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, seeing further discussion. Saying none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Again, this is ordinance number 2020-2. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, seeing further discussion. Saying none, again, the question is, should ordinance number 2020-2 be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Item D is ordinance approving preliminary and final plat of replat of Blocks Two and Three, Seward Rail Campus PUD Original Edition. Tim, did you have anything to add to that? No, Greg, do you want anything?
Nope.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to approve the final plat entitled replat of Blocks Two and Three, Seward Rail Campus PUD Original Edition, city of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, as herein, after set forth located south of Walker Road and west of Highway 15, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for an effective date hereof, and offering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2020-3, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So move.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, seeing further discussion. Saying none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Again, this is ordinance number 2020-3. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move.
Give a motion and a second, seeing further discussion. Saying none, the question is, should ordinance number 2020-3 be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Item two is also a public hearing, ordinance for text amendment to the Unified Land Development Ordinance, code section 410, article 34, off-street parking and loading, to limit the requirement that all drive-through services must provide adequate run-around access for vehicles, not any drive-through queue. Tim, welcome.
Again.
Again.
Thank you. Again, planning commission met in reference to this. The current ULDO 410349 says that a drive-through lane must be 12-foot wide, and we must provide adequate pass-around service for any drive-through, which would require another 12-foot lane, making it 24 feet wide in order for this to happen. Several of the drive-throughs here in town do not meet this current requirement. Runza, Migos, even our own city library do not meet this current requirement. Two building permits are on hold as of right now pending, because they do not meet this requirement, one being Dairy Queen, one being the IH Fury Building. They are both short on that amendment. We've done research, staff has done research with surrounding communities, and nobody has this ordinance in their ordinances for a bypass lane. So it was our opinion that we don't need it. We spoke with Chief Baldwin, no safety issues by eliminating it. So the planning commission unanimously voted to eliminate this bypass lane.
Do you want to add something, Greg?
I'll just fill in a few more details.
Yeah.
As you may know, the application for this change was put in by IH Fury LLC, and Joe, and Josh. They're the ones that requested this after working through their process of trying to sort this out. And then we all also recognized internally the issue that depending on how that went, that would make a big difference in how the design of the Dairy Queen, as it's currently designed, the new one, would work out. Under its current design, it doesn't meet this standard, and they would need to redesign it. And so knowing that, we held on to both. We knew they were going to make this application. We allowed them to do so. They brought it forth, planning and zoning, on the 15th.
Yep.
And then, they also brought in, is it Richard Burton?
Richard Burton.
Richard Burton, as a speaker for that. Richard Burton works in the planning department in Lincoln. He is the guy that reviews drive-throughs for the city of Lincoln. It's all drive-throughs that come in for all restaurants, cafes, everything you can think of. It ends up on his desk. And so he provided a PowerPoint presentation for us at the planning commission, and showed a bunch of different designs, and then he also did his own independent review with the Nebraska Planning Association, so all the planners across the state that work on plan review for different municipalities. Some noted that they did have the requirement. We're not going to tell you that this requirement exists in a vacuum. We found it in Sioux City, maybe one or two other communities, but predominantly, it is not a requirement in other communities. And so, Richard also, just for background, is also the guy that reviews a lot of our commercial planning. So the Schuler project, on behalf of the city, was actually, was reviewed by Rich. And so, he does a lot of work for the city of Seward as well, and so, very knowledgeable in the background of this. Again, unanimously approved after some discussion and other items related to it. The one thing that did come out of it that you'll see coming down the lines, it's always good to see these coming ahead of you, is that the body did request that all future, we'll need an ordinance change for this, but all future drive-throughs would come in on a special use permit requirement. That was a recommendation by the body that they'll have staff generate. And so then we can look at this, gets back to explain specifically, I think, the conundrum that Councilman Camper brought up, where we talked about the Dairy Queen drive-through, and we said, well, how do we deal with this fence issue and the lights and the sound and stuff? And we said, the council doesn't. It doesn't, this project does not come back. We were hearing that at a TIF hearing that night. And we said, if it meets all the standards, it's not coming back. We sign off on the project and it goes forth. And so, by having this special use permit for all drive-throughs, that gives the planning commission in this body the ability to have their hands in those and just take a look at some of those peripheral issues that may not be able to be covered. So that's something that's also following this up in the back, but it will not affect probably the current applicants, because they came in before that change well in advance. So, and that was the intent of Chairman Wallman on the board, that he didn't want to interrupt these guys and what they're trying to do with Dairy Queen and IH Fury. And so, there's that. One last item, sorry. It's going to come up later, I think it's the next agenda I did down. Also, this decision, and as we worked through this, is not made in a vacuum. You may be well aware with what went on with the zoning admin, Board of Adjustment, and the drive-through for Fly Dogs at the IH Fury Building. We had, with the initial design and how we work with the drive-through, and having it exit into an alley, and then off an alley to a major thoroughfare or street, highway. We had to sort through that ultimately as we get into that discussion tonight. I did meet with all of the property owners, IH Fury, Helmick, Cattle Bank, Tom Sparetime, I think Roger's here from the auto body shop or the auto shop. And I did meet with them in person and discuss our plans. And so we do believe we also have a plan that should you make this change, it doesn't now open up an issue there that we think they can work with. You'll see that in the resolution following. So I don't want that to frame our discussion here. This should be broad, and then we'll focus down in the resolution discussing the alley behind Cattle Bank. So.
There's the lay of the land.
Sorry.
On that note, I will open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Would anyone in the public wish to comment on item number two near public hearings? You're welcome to come to the podium if you'd like. But one at a time, don't rush.
We want.
Okay? I did have a Fly Dog hot dog tonight, by the way. It was very good. Let's work. If no one wishes to comment, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number two. Does the council have any other questions or comments on item number two?
Greg did a good job summarizing the planning commission meeting. They did spend a lot of time discussing safety issues. Thus the reason for all drive-throughs becoming special use permits. Coming back to council.
Any other questions or comments?
If not, someone like to introduce?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
The ordinance.
Oh, the ordinance, sorry.
Very good. In order to amend the municipal, right here? In order to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, chapter 410, zoning and subdivision, article 34, off-street parking and loading, to eliminate the requirement that all drive-through services must provide adequate run-around access for vehicles not in a drive-through queue, to review all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to provide for an effective date, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2020-4, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So move.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, seeing further discussion. Saying none, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Again, this is ordinance number 2020-4. We don't like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read.
So move.
Sorry.
Give a motion and a second, seeing further discussion. Saying none, again, the question is, should ordinance number 2020-4 be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes. Please sway the votes. This is the last ordinance for this evening. So I need one final motion to make all the ordinance support the permanent record.
So move.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Under administrative items, number one is resolution designate a portion of the north-south alley between Seward Street and Highway 34, between Fourth and Fifth Streets, as one-way travel, south only. Greg?
Yes. As we kind of laid the land out, I did go around and speak with and continue to work with all the property owners on the block in question, again, bordering between Fourth Street and Fifth Street, Highway 34 and Seward Street, containing Sparetime, RG, Helmick Building, IH Fury Building, and Cattle Bank. And so, in working with, speaking with them directly, I know that representatives from cattle, I don't think we have anyone here tonight, Brian had a meeting in Lincoln. I know Roger's here. I spoke with them each individually and sometimes with a number of people when I came to the bank. And the ultimate decision was made, it changed from Friday all the way into yesterday afternoon, but Roger will attest for me, and I think Joe can too. Joe talked to Josh today. He knows what the plan is. Ultimately, the resolution they all came to and agreed upon was they would like to see that alley go to a two-way out, all the way through. The reason being is that the IH Fury Building will set up their drive-through. The initial plans and specs that were reviewed by Tim's office had them coming through off of Fifth Street, going through, and then heading north under the current one-way. And that caused them to have to push them out to make the curve around the Fury Building and then head north. And so ultimately, by making it a two-way, it allows them to exit out onto Highway 34, and they'll work to get in the proper signage. And we talked about a bump-out curbing to kind of direct people off. There's enough width, because the Helmick Building doesn't go all the way back. There's significant space behind it, and a wider breadth getting out onto the highway than on the north side going out east Seward, along with the on-street parking that causes issues up there. And so the recommendation was by everybody involved is if we can direct the traffic out of the drive-through, which is a far easier turn, right onto Highway 34. As they exit to Highway 34, they can only turn right and head west because of the island. We'll put a one-way sign there as well pursuant to requirements NDOT. They also have a nice clear view of all oncoming traffic heading west, looking east. So we feel like that's the most prudent way to do it. It gives Roger some width there because it's wider. And speaking to Tom, still allows Tom at Sparetime, he's predominantly the only one that's loading and unloading at this point. Most of his trucks are either on Seward Street or out front of Sparetime at this point. But when he's doing his catering business, or if he has a band playing or something, they like to load in that alley. It gives them free flow to come from one way or the other, depending on what's going on. It allows Cattle Bank to utilize their alley parking in the way they do now. That was probably their biggest concern. Other than that, they felt like whatever we did would be appropriate. And so I've worked with, I don't know if Joe can confirm it and Roger, but I've worked with both of them and their associates in this, and that is the request that they would like to see. They all think it would work, and that would be the one safe opportunity, we believe, to bring forth a drive-through at the IH Fury Building. So I can answer questions about that, and then I can make a recommendation for what we want to do if we want to address it tonight.
Sid, I don't have a map in front of me, but I'm trying to think in my head. So Sparetime's kind of in the middle.
Sparetime's almost to the northern end.
So say that, say that like Tom's band is coming into town, and they want to come in from the north, but the north is one-way only to the north, right?
It's a two-way alley now.
It's two-way totally.
The whole way is what everybody wanted.
So.
This was them currently.
This between when I drafted this, I've spoken.
So this one-way is out the window.
No, they would like to amend, and so I will guide you through that tonight on the language.
That makes complete sense.
And if you're, if it's confusing, we can redraft it for you and bring it back. But again, I've gotten confirmation from all business owners that that is what they're willing to work with.
Gotcha.
And we have some here, so if they want to speak to it, I don't want to step on toes.
That answers it. Any other questions or comments?
So it's different than what we had in the packet.
Correct. Yep. And I'll guide you through my recommendation.
So I'll make the resolution, I'll introduce it with the changes per Greg.
So.
Two-way, two-way.
For the entire length of the alley running north-south in Block 11, original town of the city of Seward, Nebraska, is designated as a two-way alley for vehicle traffic, such traffic to travel north and south of said alley, and that signed signals and devices be erected and maintained and enforced, directing the travel of such vehicle travel accordingly.
And John would like to introduce that resolution?
I will, I can introduce it.
Resolution has been introduced and it is designated as resolution number 2020-3. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please sway the votes. Item number two, resolution removing parking on the east side of 14th Street from the intersection of Elm Street North to the intersection of Seward Street. Greg?
Yes, not enough traffic stuff. As we discussed last time, Doug Brand, working in conjunction with the Ag Society and the Fairgrounds, had put in a request to come talk to the city council about issues with parking along 14th Street. And so that was presented to you last time, and we said we would develop a resolution, and then we would also inform the business owners and residents that lived along this area. Chief Baldwin did take a flyer and went door-to-door, knocked on doors, dropped off flyers, and informed them of the potential for a resolution tonight considering the parking. And that was our one way to kind of get ahold of them and get their input without doing a survey right on the middle of the street. And so, he did so and provided some input. We got a little bit of feedback, and then ultimately, we did get a recommendation for a change on this, initially to start out with. Instead of going to Seward Street, the recommendation was to just go to Main at this point. Main is the one that's just north. It actually widens at Main. We get about four or five feet width at Main Street. And so, by reviewing it, going out on site, that was the initial one, to see how that works. And if we still continue to see issues with the Ag Society or people parking north of Main on both sides and not getting enough width, then we'll address it again after that. But Baldwin and others down there didn't think that would be an issue, once we widen out in Main. I just said go all the way to Seward Street if we're going to do it on the east side. And so, that's, the resolution for you is for Elm Street to Seward Street. Administration's recommendation to amend this to Main Street to start out. Let's test it out, see how it works. If we continue to have width problems, and Doug reports that, or Hughes Brothers, also the electric departments had issues down there, then we can do that. then we can do that if we need to table it and relook at it, or if, yep, questions or concerns, we can go from there.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right.
Amended.
Amended, resolution.
If you want to restate that.
Yep. The resolution, all we will do is the parking will be restricted on the east side of Fourteenth Street from the intersection of Elm Street. Again, reminder for you, Elm is the little jaunt off the highway that comes off, so Elm Street north to Main Street, the intersection of Main Street.
That is the resolution that Sid is introducing. The resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash four. Anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'll move. Second.
Motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes. Tabled item number three. Item number four, designate Julie Augen, J E O Consultants Incorporated as consultant to the city of Seward as a Class A Street Superintendent license, number S dash fourteen oh seven for NDOT programming requirements and incentive payments effective December sixth, twenty nineteen. Greg, explain this.
Yes, with the retirement of Street Superintendent Mel Aldrich. Mel was designated certified Class A Street Superintendent. That actually has a meaning specific to requirements of the State Department of Transportation. And so, when Mel retired, we didn't have anyone else designated on staff that fills that position. We get specific state incentive funding each year. Right now, it's approximately six thousand dollars a year by having a Class A Street Su- certified Street Superintendent on file. And so, we informed NDOT that Mel had retired, and they said, well, you either need to train somebody up, which can, is only offered twice a year, and they have to be a B first and then an A, or you can have a consultant come in who is and just designate them. Ultimately, we may not use them for anything specific other than review of some of our plans and programming. But it's good to have it on because it saves that funds. Otherwise, for every month you're without, you lose one month worth of that funding until you get it replaced. And so, I worked with Lemoine at NDOT, and he said this would be fine. Just send these minutes that you've appointed Julie. Julie has worked on the one-six-year plan with Mel for years and years and years until Jake came on, familiar with projects and things like that. So, this is, this is not replacing Mel and actually like she's going to be down here working in his office. This is strictly a designation to give to NDOT so that we can secure that funding and continue to bring it in for street purposes.
Any questions or comments on item number four?
Yeah, so Greg, when we get another Street Superintendent, will then that Superintendent become this person again? So, is this a temporary thing, or will we just always keep her kind of as a retainer?
My, my recommendation, knowing now how the program specifically works and talking to state, I would leave Julie forever, in my professional opinion. The reason being, if we ever have a drop, we don't have to do this again. She's just there as long as she's licensed and certified and works for this organization. But what we will do, the plan will be is to have the next Street Superintendent, if they don't come in with that license, is train them up because they need to know that. The other thing that can happen that we just didn't utilize with Jake when he was here is any certified civil engineer in the state of Nebraska can automatically apply for this without going through the courses and the training and get certified as long as they meet the minimal restrictions without any of the other stuff, and they can get put on. So, for instance, now Beatrice, both their actual Street Superintendent and their City Engineer both have it. If you lose one, usually, usually not like us where they lose both at the same time. If you lose one, the other one covers for it until you fill it back up to two. Just to protect us, we'll just let this lie in place. So, we're always covered, and we don't have to scamper and remember this in the future. That would be my recommendation.
Do we have any in Class B right now?
Nope. We don't have anyone in Class B either. So, it may be worthwhile, I mean, again, if you look at succession planning, maybe worthwhile to look at at least getting a Class B, so like a Foreman in the future as we move through that. But it's expensive, and again, for what it is, it would make more sense to have the Street Superintendent and the City Engineer because the City Engineer one's really easy to get, once you get an engineer online.
Any other questions or comments?
Or does someone like to make a motion to designate Julie Augen?
We can mention to designate Julie as the consultant and Class A Street Superintendent.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second and a fair discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item five, annual certification of fire department list. Greg?
Yep, this is an annual certification to the state as a requirement that began quite a few years ago pursuant to the state statute change. We certify to the State Department, I believe, of revenue, and then this gives a list that then these volunteer firefighters can submit to get a, I believe, a state income tax deduction, which is verified off of this list.
Credit, I think it's a credit.
Or credit. Something through their income taxes through the state.
This deductive income taxes, but it's a two-year. So, even though you vote on these this year, they can't get it till the following year. You have to make it two years in a row.
Yeah, they have to be on the list two years straight. So, but we continue to do this at this time every year.
Any questions or comments?
Who approve the certification?
We have a motion and a second and a fair discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item number six, resolution amending the comprehensive fees for Parks, Recreation, Golf Cemetery. Greg?
Yes, twofold change, three-fold change. First, we remembered that part of one of the policies and process I had so that we could keep everything together, have one uniform list, is for parks, cemeteries, golf course, everything. We had a uniform resolution. So, every time we update, we always updated the uniform one. Well, we forgot that on the last one with the cemetery stuff. So, we incorporated that cemetery information back in here. And then also, we got a request that went through the Parks and Rec Committee to look at the driving range fees. And I know we have Cody here tonight, our golf pro at the golf shop, and he can talk about kind of the specifics of why we recommended changes to driving range fees. And then we can go from there and answer any of your questions. Cody, you want to come up?
This is Adam, Cody Harold, I'm the golf pro, the golf course. So, last season, at one point in the year, I kind of, I kind of started seeing a trend as far as driving range stuff goes. And that trend being our, a lot of our, I wouldn't say a lot, several of our driving range pass holders, they're using it a lot, is basically what it's coming down to. And I felt that our rates for the season pass were a little bit too cheap compared to whatever, everything else that I could find. So, I did some research, looked at a bunch of golf courses around the area, and there were really only four of them that I could find, two of them being in Lincoln, York Country Club, and then the golf course in Aurora. So, the only one that would be real similar to us would be the one in Aurora, and they are at a hundred and fifty dollars for a single pass. So, right now, where our pass rates were, were a hundred dollars for a single, one fifty for a family. It didn't matter if you had two people in your family or twelve. So, what I proposed at Parks and Rec last week was that we go to a hundred and fifty for a single and then two twenty-five for a family if you have a season pass for the golf course itself. Now, if you want to have just the driving range, which we have a few people that do that, then I would like it to be two hundred dollars for a single and then two seventy-five for a family. Now, the reason for me wanting that to be a little bit different, paying more if you don't have a pass is trying to entice people that had a, just a driving range pass to then maybe get a season pass this next season, which I know at least one will be doing that. So, and then the other recommendation from Parks and Rec for was that we keep a hundred-dollar pass for juniors. So, that's where it's at.
What was the recommendation?
The, the recommendation was, was exactly what I proposed, adding the hundred-dollar junior pass.
Okay, which is noted in your resolution. The hundred-dollar junior pass is in there. And I confirmed, because I, I try not to go to every committee meeting anymore. We've got plenty of committees. I did confirm that the high school coach, Jim Plackey, was there. So, I was like, I need my golf expert on the committee to be there. And so, Jim was there. So, I was, I felt better about all of that going through there. So.
Greg, any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Sid?
Cody, I, I always perceive the driving range really as kind of a, almost a sales tool, you know, because you'll get people that take lessons, that, that want to go out there as almost kind of a segue to maybe a pass. So, I'm, I'm just a little, I understand your justification because other courses, you know, are, are charging higher rates. But I'm a little hesitate, hesitant for the big jump and the big difference between a season pass holder and not. Just because, I mean, the driving range isn't ever going to be a moneymaker, really for us. And especially what the changes we're going to be making out there with the liquor license and everything, you know, the, the city's prospect for generating much more revenue is very real. So, I'm just, I'm just a little hesitant about, you know, the, the harsh bump in it. I don't want to discourage people from wanting to come out and just learn, you know, as a stair step to then becoming a season pass holder. And then, the other question I had for you is, because I don't know, I've never done it, but like if there's people that give lessons, do they, how, how does that work if they're giving lessons? Do they have like a special pass that they can just bring their, their people they're teaching out there?
In particular with Shane, I'm sure you're talking about. The way his works is I charge him for a pass for the season for the driving range as a, a family pass, and then he also pays for a pass for the golf course as well. So, in doing that, then I allow him to teach out there.
To teach out there, okay.
And then he keeps all of his profit from there. But he's, he's paying for a pass for the season to do that. And then as far as your comment before that, one of the other reasons why I kind of, I thought we needed to be charging a little more for driving range is that it is, it, it's not costing us, us a significant amount to run it, but we do continue to have to buy range balls every year because of just the location that it's in. We're losing a lot of range balls. So, we got to buy new ones all the time. We got to pay somebody to be out there to pick their range, whether it's me, whether it's Court or whoever. And then, we also are in the process of purchasing a new range ball washer and a range picker, which was mentioned before already, but, but to offset some of the costs like that are kind of where, are kind of why I wanted to make this change.
And the reality is, is that, you know, if a change is made, then, I mean, like you said, you, you notice a trend. If there is a significant drop-off or the trend the other way, I assume you'll be back here around this time next year.
Oh, absolutely.
With the recommendation to adjust it. So, it's not like this is set in stone for the next fifty years.
Right.
It is kind of a work in progress, and, and, and I think a lot of you just kind of have to be out there and get a sense of what people are utilizing and how often do they utilize, you know, things like the, the driving range. Is that fair?
Yeah, and there's, and there's not a ton of people that will affect. Overall, this last year, we had twenty-three range passes, sixteen of those being singles and seven were families. So, there's not a ton of people that it's going to make a difference to. But I think if we keep all those same passes or a majority of them, the extra income that we're going to get, I think is worth it.
Any other questions or comments?
Just my kind of same feeling as Sid, being one that was out there a lot, quite a bit as a family member. That I don't want to see that discourage people without season passes. Obviously, I'm in that same boat because I'm settling into the golf thing now. But as a community, you know, as a community golf course, it'd be good to just see people from the community taking up the sport, do it on the driving range, not on the golf course. I think that's really my thought on it. It, it becomes a lot easier when you learn than it does when you're out on the golf course, chucking balls and stuff.
Just curious, Cody, how do we compare to Milford sincerely, kind of our closest?
I could not find any information as far as them doing a range pass for a full season.
They might not have that option.
Yeah.
The both of them were just like a basket, right? You just-
Right.
You can, but you, I think you have to be a member to be on the drive.
Yeah, that might be.
Sometimes it's just part of the membership.
Any other questions or comments?
I mean, I, I can agree with Sid and Jonathan as far as discouraging people. However, it is my backyard, and I see the Gozahn out there. And some balls may disappear off the course and whatnot. So.
Like in your garage, like where?
You have your own picker, I think. So, I mean, I think we give this a run. I mean, the other issue is for those people who are members and also have the driving range pass, many times you'll go up to the clubhouse and you want to get balls to go down and hit, and there are none because the family of seven just came through and all of them took the big huge bucket and went down there and hit everything. So, you know, the, the option is still there for people to buy a small bucket, a medium bucket, or a large bucket. We're not telling them, don't kind of come use the, the driving range. We're, we're trying to manage what's happening there, and, you know, as Josh threw out there, if this, if this process doesn't work, Cody, Cody will be back here.
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right. Resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash five. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Next item is item number one of the reports, city administrative report. Greg?
Had the holidays going on and took up a lot of time working on drive-throughs and lots of other things. So, I'm, at this point, I will just answer any questions you have. I will note, we did hire our administrative aide position, and it kind of came out in public today. And so, Suzanne Glagorovich will be joining us at City Hall to Jonathan's fist raising in the air at me. She'll be moving over from SCCDC next week, correct? Next week?
Correct, yeah.
And coming down to City Hall to serve as my administrative assistant and also help out in coverage in City Hall with our other staff up there in the utility office. And so, we're excited to have her coming on board. We had a great group of candidates, and so, it was a very competitive, we were very excited about it, but we're super excited to have Suzanne come on board.
Welcome.
Can you answer any questions you have?
Any more on the parking on Fifth? Do you guys have any evaluations?
Oh, in regards to, yes, we started with going over and talking to the bank and the lock casino. Then Jake was gone because I, man, I really think we got to do a lot of parking stalls there. I think it's going to be more than we think to try and get better sight views. And so, we'll continue to work on that. And then, once it stops snowing, me and Bob are going to get together and have your maintenance plan for the levee. So, we pulled all that information out. So, we're working on that, but I can't get him in for more than five minutes. So. Anything else?
Yeah, any other questions for Greg?
What's going on on Second Street? I don't even know this, but what is going on?
Right now, we have a number of fiber optic providers, correct, Tim? Yes. That are working their way up essentially to the North Water Tower. There are a bunch of different fiber optics. I think that includes Great Plains Communication, Nebraska Link, and I believe Windstream. Windstream's been doing a lot of work in the county, hovering out in different directions and putting up different utility, small-scale utility poles just outside our two-mile jurisdiction. So, Becky has to deal with them, not us. But they are working through town. That's fiber optic. Some of you may have seen those little huts or domes sitting on the corner. Those are ultimately vaults that would be placed in the ground at surface level, but it might be a while before they get some of those in because the ground's going to be a little hard. So, but they're continuing to work through that. And Tim was tasked with specifically reaching out and contacting Bauer Underground and whoever their subsidies there is, they're working for to find out what their plan is, because they're going through it in the hard winter. Well, you can't seed and plant grass and everything back. And so, make sure they have a follow-up plan that's very specific, and then also seeing if they're contacting property owners and stuff. And if they're not, or we don't have a requirement for that, that's something we're going to address at the request of, of the mayor. And we need to make sure with this much fiber optic activity going on in town, that they're going around with door hangers or some way of contacting property owners to know that, hey, here's what's going on in your right-of-way, here's a phone number and a way to get more information.
And it's not like to get permission or anything. Obviously, they have a right of way to be there. But it's just, we get calls from people like, well, just like your question, what's going- But it's just, we get calls from people like, oh, it's just like your question, well, what's going on on Second Street? And we think a lot of the mystery would get solved if they would just communicate better with the property owners. And maybe it's some, because you know, in some cases, though, there might be a little piece of equipment sitting on, on that property all, all weekend. And the homeowner's like, what's, what's going on because no one's told them. And so, um, that's our goal is just to identify kind of what's going on now and come up with a plan for what we could possibly do in the future to uh, just help better communi- help the communication between whoever's doing the boring and the property owner so that they know what's going on, they know a timeline. And in this case, would know when they're going to come back and do repairs because they probably can't do the repairs at this time of year.
Any other questions for, for Greg's report?
I'd like to address the council quickly regarding what? The South Fourteenth Street.
South Fourteenth Street.
Does the parking?
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Richard Bullwitt, uh, live at two thirty-three South Fourteenth Street, Bender's and Snack Lane. And uh, we get along real well with Region Five. Uh, we have no complaints about that for their employees. We're, we're in tight. Our concerns are uh, with the vehicles that are parked next to our, our right-of-way in front of our house. Um, I've seen people go through there and take off mirrors of these cars. And that was before we had the issue of people parking on both sides of the street. Hughes Brothers, there's trucks come through there very often, and they have to wait sometimes for people to come through and so forth. And so, um, uh, I'm just really concerned about this. Uh, is it possible, another solution would be that there could be off-street parking in front of Region Five? Or could there possibly be, uh, I'm not sure, there's a property across the street next to the city power over there, but there's a open area there that, uh, between two businesses that could be concreted. They could park over there too as well. Just some suggestions that could possibly take place. And also when the people get out of their cars, when it's winter time, they have to go out on the street to walk. And when there's only so much room, I, uh, that becomes a situation where somebody could get hit or slip on the ice and get hit. So, uh, and also, uh, during the summer, the city of Seward goes around and cleans streets. They've never cleaned our streets since Region Five moved there because there's cars there all the time. I go out and sweep the street myself. And, uh, so there are just some things I'd like to cover. And uh, thank you for your time. Also, I know that uh, it does slow down the traffic a little bit because a lot of times people like to go from the stop sign where Hughes Brothers is, go south, see how fast they can go before they get to the stop sign. And I've seen several times just sitting in my kitchen window. And uh, there's kids across the street now that live there, so that's a concern as well, so. I don't know if you're going to pull signs or not. When we came home from vacation, it says it was on the thirteenth that this was put out. And it says that we were supposed to be given a chance to speak and that's why I'm here.